I can have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the October ninth.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one, motion carries unanimous. Public forum this evening? No one? Okay, we are gonna go to the presentations for this evening and we have the absolute honor and privilege of having Mrs. Conneager here along with her first grade class. I also like to recognize the principals of the building, Nicole I and Jessica Madaraza. Could you please stand up and be acknowledged?
Are you here?
There they are, there's your principals. And we will have Mrs. Conneager come up to the podium.
Good evening. So, I'm just gonna give you a brief overview. I'm gonna take you back to February of 2018 when we embarked on one of the most amazing projects I've done in 25 years of teaching. The children decided to publish a book. We did it with the premise of looking for math in our everyday lives. Where do you see it? Where do you smell it? Where do you hear it? Where do you feel it? Where do you taste it? And they brainstormed an enormous list of ideas and just found math in so many places around them. After doing that, we embarked on the entire writing process. We took them through writing the piece, illustrating it, editing it, finalizing their project, and then boxing it up and sending it off to the publisher. The publishing company we used was Student Treasures and they were phenomenal to deal with. A few weeks later, we received in the mail a box with our book, A World of Math, and the children at the tender age of six and seven became published authors and are very proud of themselves yet today as well they should be. So, we're going to fast forward just a little bit to this past summer when we received word that after all of that hard work, the children were selected out of over 156,000 entries at Student Treasures as the first place winners in their national book challenge.
We'll give them a round of applause.
And subsequently, the children received another copy of their book. The school has received $5,000 which Mrs. Madaraza and Mrs. I and myself were still, you know, hammering all of that out, but in the meantime, we're here to celebrate them and their amazing, amazing accomplishment. I am very, very proud of them. We would like to turn the spotlight onto them and have them share with you each, the page that they wrote for the book, so we hope you enjoy. Boys and girls, stand up. And come right up here, bring your book. Right to me, come here. And open up right to your page. And you will share with them, okay? Okay? And how about, I will hold it for you.
Mrs. Conneager, just, we televise so the little boy with the blue hood, if he could just move to the left a little bit and then maybe, right. I just wanna make sure the cameras are getting this. Perfect.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I see math when I play baseball. I run to first base and second base and third base, then I run home. I run in the shape of a rhombus. By Matthew.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I hear math when I go to the doctor for a checkup. He measures me to see how much I grew. By Hunter.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I feel math when I play basketball. I bounce the ball, it is a spear. We keep score, my team is winning. By Marcos.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. We use it every day. I hear math when it is my birthday. People sing, I count six candles on my cake. By Nathaniel.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I see math when I'm in the car. We must stop. The sign is shaped like an octagon. By Peyton.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I see math when I read books. The books are shaped like rectangles and the pages have numbers. By Jade.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I smell math in the kitchen when I, I measure how much banana and honey I need to make a smoothie. It smells sweet. By Noemi. And I never even made it yet.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I see math when I count the people in my family. There are two boys and two girls, so there are people.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I hear math when the astronauts count down. The rocket ship will go to space. By Jonya.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I feel math when I pull out my tooth. I had 20 teeth, now I have 19 teeth. By Sierra.
Math is everywhere, we use it every day. I see math when I'm in the car. The sign says go 30 miles per hour. By Giovanni.
So, you can see, they, they know the book. They know the book. I'm sure the parents have heard it many, many, many times, but I don't think it's one that they're ever going to get tired of reading and I certainly will never get tired of hearing it. Good job.
So, every board member has a book. We thank you for that and we'll definitely read that this evening and we want you to hang on because we do have a special presentation for each and every child tonight. Board members, if I can have you circle around front, please.
Thank you. You can go if you want. I know my place. Now, do we sell that book and the kids can go out to the board?
So, when I, when I call your name, come get your certificate, you're going to take it and then you're gonna walk right around and shake everybody's hand so they can congratulate you, okay? Jonyal Alamo. Hunter Levante. Noemi Mandeville. Peyton Millis. Jade Ortiz. Ciara Regan. And Giovanni Robles.
So, Mrs. Conneager is not allowed to give herself a certificate, but Mrs. Conneager's getting a certificate as soon as I can find it in here. Really, Mrs. Conneager, we wanna thank you on behalf of the administration and I'm sure the board will speak, you know, for themselves, but we're really proud of not only your class but of you, for your hard work and dedication over the years. We're really proud of the students and we're just so lucky to have you and this pro, and this book, and all the board members have it, so really thank you very much. I'm gonna find this while I hand this to you.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to say thank you. It's been, we really are very proud of all the children who participated in this book with the help of the administration and certainly we wanna say thank you to Mrs. Conneager for your efforts and recognize you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we certainly commend you and we look forward to your continuing success here at Ellenville and we look forward to the future authors around the world, the future James Pattersons of the world. Here they are. Can we have all the kids come up here and take a photo with the board, please? All the kids, come on. And Mrs. Conneager. And the principals too. Principals, come on up.
I did a great job today. Great job today.
I'm done.
We got two more coming.
Alright, everybody. Alright, one, two, three. One more ready. Three, one, two, three. Thank you.
I have a question on this whole thing.
This is not question and answer time.
It has to be, sorry.
We are going on to report, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
To Mrs. Conneager's data, is it gonna be for Mrs. Conneager?
Well, it can be to her or to, yeah, actually, okay.
So, Mrs. Conneager. Mrs. Conneager, one of the board members has a question for you.
Were we able to get a copy to our public library as well?
Um, you know what? Actually, no, but I have an extra copy and can give them one of mine.
Okay, thank you. I think that'd be nice, thanks.
That's a great idea, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Boys and girls, you've made your parents proud and you made this community proud and we thank you very much and we look, we look forward to reading one of your books in the near future, so thank you again. We'll get a round of applause. Well, I'm sure the parents wanna stay for the rest of this meeting. I think the children are near bedtime, but you're certainly welcome to stay. We do welcome anybody that wants to stay, but if not, thank you for coming.
That was cool. That was so cool.
Oh, yeah.
Did the little dance off.
Did the chicken dick.
Very spacious.
I think I left the other certificates off.
Did you take them?
Remember Callan?
Let's keep it real.
Lost it.
156,000 entries, they came first.
My daughter had her at kindergarten and she was my friend.
But you're still running.
All right, so we're gonna move on to reports for this evening.
Just like to read a couple of letters that were received about the Hall of Fame Committee presentation that was done. Dear Mr. Burns, I am, I am writing to express my appreciation and gratitude for the recent Hall of Fame induction ceremony. I was proud to hear my brother inducted into the Hall of Fame. Mark Steinhoff did a nice job in discussing my brother's history and the rationale for his being a member of the Hall of Fame. I also enjoyed hearing about the other distinguished inductees. The ceremony itself was well organized. I have proudly mounted the attractive plaque that I received in my living room. I have enclosed some pictures of the ceremony taken by my friend and my brother. I hope that you enjoy them and they, that they represent a token of my appreciation of the effort made by the Hall of Fame Committee in organizing the October 6, 2018 event. Sincerely, Thomas Woodhouse. Also, dear John, as Chairman of the Hall of Fame Committee, I wish to express my appreciation for the selection to the first class of inductees at Ellenville High School. Your organization of the festivities of this memorable day were excellent. Seeing and reminiscing with people of the past was heartwarming. Kudos to your entire committee, the restaurant owners, as well as the support staff that set up the outdoor ceremony. I must mention three regrets, however. Not greeting, not getting to visit with Sue, speaking too long, and lastly, distracting from the occasion by passing out. Medical attention was timely at all as well. Continued success with your future class of inductees. With personal regards, Ken Ralph. And we'd just like to say thank you again to John and to all the committee members and to everybody who, and there's, you know, too many to name, but certainly kudos to everybody. And John, if you have anything to add to that, go ahead.
I just wanna repeat again, there were a lot of people that helped out to make it the success that it was and we think it's even gonna be bigger and better next year and hopefully, none of our inductees will pass out, as Mr. Ralph said.
I also want to, I did attend the football game that occurred between Liberty and Ellenville. I thought it was well attended. It's great to have these events at night. I would like to see more events held on that football field from every different sport that we have here in the district and we need to certainly look, look into how we can schedule that and make that appropriate because it is a great community gathering that people come together for, they look forward to these games, they're well attended. I also want to compliment the sportsmanship that was shown in, by Ellenville and by Liberty, by both teams and as well by everybody in attendance. And that is all I have this evening. Board membership? Nobody? Okay, we'll move on to student representative is not here. Do we have a report from her? Okay.
So, we have a report from the student representative. Last week, Friday night was senior night for football. Saturday was the Alzheimer's Walk that was attended by the Key Club. The middle school joined in this year. Girls' field hockey and soccer started sectionals. So, I'll give you an update on my report when I get there. The Think Pink Cancer Walk is next Saturday and it's being hosted by the high school student council. It's this Saturday from nine to 11:00 and it is in memory of Mrs. Joan Beck. Parent-teacher conferences were successful. The Honor Society set up coffee carts and it, those meetings took place last Tuesday and Friday. The fundraisers that are happening right now in the high school, sophomores are selling Gertrude Hawk and the juniors are selling Krispy Kreme. That's what we have from the student rep.
Thank you. We'll move on to your report for this evening.
Okay, so, just to dovetail on that report, our varsity field hockey teams and girls' soccer, varsity soccer teams played sectional games today away and unfortunately, they were not successful in their competitions, but I will tell you that both teams played with great heart along with our varsity soccer team that went to sectionals this year also. And I believe this coming Saturday, our cross-country team is participating in some competition. So, just kudos and congratulations for all of their hard work. I know it was a devastating loss, but we're really proud of all of our athletes, especially those that went to postseason play. On Monday, November 5th, well, let me back up. On Tuesday, December 4th, we'll have a referendum on the Capitol Project that the board is putting forward. There'll be a number of community presentations. The first coming up on November 5th, it's a PTO meeting and we'll have information on our website. We are updating the website for additional information on the Capitol Project, so please check that out. We'll have some information and links on our Facebook page. At the next meeting on November 13th, the eighth grade class advisors along with some students will be presenting the Boston Trip itinerary and they are using, from what I understand, a new tour company and they can present all of that information to you. That's coming up. I just also wanted to point out finally that the front of the school, we did quite a bit of work. If you have the opportunity to drive past it across Maple, just take a look at it, it's really looking good. The trees were pruned back. We did some work and we'll continue the work this spring on the, on the front lawn.
Yeah, I just wanna add to that, Mr. Hyatt's crew did a very nice job on it.
They did. They absolutely did, so, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli?
The only thing I'd like to say is just a reminder to anyone who's on the Wellness Committee, there is a Wellness Committee meeting tomorrow. It is at 2:00. I know it's not at the normal time, but there is a Wellness Committee meeting tomorrow.
I'm gonna make one change to the Wellness Committee. At their consent, I'm gonna move Wayne Story to the Wellness Committee relieving Iris Freedom. And who else is from the board is myself and Jody Lovell. The Deputy Superintendent, Miss Angela Urbina-Medina.
Just a reminder that tomorrow's our October Superintendent's Conference Day. We have three professional learning workshops of CPR recertification, de-escalation training for teaching assistants and aides and a training on Bright Bites, which I look forward to sharing with the board at some point down the road, which is our student success and intervention management technology model. Thank you.
And in reference to those, that conference day, in the future when we have conference days, is there any way to put, when we talk to principals about, you know, incorporating maybe some professional development for some of the initiatives that we look, that we're looking to now, you know, maybe a math curriculum, a different curriculum writing components and maybe including them as part of our, as part of our Superintendent's Conference Day?
Certainly. With the calendar being as it is now, with the, the days and the hours that we're counting, our Superintendent Conference Days are few and far between. So, we try and squeeze in as much as possible. We certainly can work that into our next conference day.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to Personnel Resolutions for this evening. Under 6.1, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following salary reclassifications, graduate credits and degrees stipulated in the ETA contract.
Motion to move the list, it's presented.
Second. List has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.3, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that certified substitute carrying an instructional period during his or her preparation period shall receive an additional stipend of $15 for covering the instructional period. Be it further resolved that an un-certified substitute covering an instructional period during his or her preparation period shall receive an additional stipend of $10 for covering such instructional period.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Upon the, under 6.4, Wellness Committee, upon the recommendation, Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following teachers be appointed for January Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55.
Move the list. Motion to move the list. Second.
List has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the list? Jody?
I see some of the subjects are not covered here. Are we still looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following teachers be appointed for the June Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55 per hour work.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion on the list? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.7, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the elementary school extended day program personnel be approved at a rate of $42 per hour work for 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.8, certified sub-two teacher, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Sue Lichtenberg be appointed certified substitute teacher at a rate of $125 per day work for the 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.9, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Rihanna Fagin's request for an unpaid child rearing leave until January 7, 2019 be granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.10, professional development. Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the individuals listed below be approved to participate in the K-12 math curriculum not to exceed 20 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work.
Move the list.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm not in favor, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
You're in favor? Okay. Everybody's in favor, then it's unanimous. Motion carries. 6.11, curriculum writing. Be it resolved, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, that the following individuals be approved to complete math curriculum writing not to exceed 20 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work for the 1819 school year.
Move the list.
Second.
List has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.12, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that co-curricular personnel set forth on the list below be approved at a contractual rate listed for the 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.12, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the co-curricular personnel set forth on the list below be approved at a contractual rate listed for the 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.14, professional development. Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following individuals be approved to work on the Wellness Committee after school for the 2018-19 school year.
Move the list, it's presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Under 6.5, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following teachers be appointed for January Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55.
Move the list. Motion to move the list. Second.
List has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the list? Jody?
I see some of the subjects are not covered here. Are we still looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the following teachers be appointed for the June Regents Review at a contractual rate of $55 per hour work.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion on the list? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.7, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the elementary school extended day program personnel be approved at a rate of $42 per hour work for 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.8, certified sub-two teacher, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Sue Lichtenberg be appointed certified substitute teacher at a rate of $125 per day work for the 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.9, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that Rihanna Fagin's request for an unpaid child rearing leave until January 7, 2019 be granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.10, professional development. Upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the individuals listed below be approved to participate in the K-12 math curriculum not to exceed 20 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work.
Move the list.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm not in favor, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
You're in favor? Okay. Everybody's in favor, then it's unanimous. Motion carries. 6.11, curriculum writing. Be it resolved, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, that the following individuals be approved to complete math curriculum writing not to exceed 20 hours at a rate of $41 per hour work for the 1819 school year.
Move the list.
Second.
List has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. 6.12, upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, be resolved that the co-curricular personnel set forth on the list below be approved at a contractual rate listed for the 1819 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, no one? Motion carries unanimous. We will go on to Policy Resolution, 7.1. Be it resolved that this be considered the first readings of Policies 3,000, 5,000, 6,000, 7,000.